Welcome to the council meeting of Kirkland Lake, March the 19th, 2019. We'll have a moment of silence. Approval of the agenda?
It's moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of March 19th, 2019 with the following amendment. That the 100th anniversary committee be moved to 6VA to allow for council, to allow questions from council and staff and the committee concerning their requests.
All in favor? Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
It's moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The 100th anniversary executive committee held December 12th, 2018, January 17th, and February 21st, 2019. The meeting to open sealed proposals for economic development website design that was held on March 1st, 2019. The regular meeting of council held March 5th, 2019 with requested amendments to questions from council to staff. The emergency meeting of council which was held March 11th, 2019, and the finance meeting held March 12th, 2019.
All in favor? Unanimous? Reports of municipal officers and communications, CAO?
I was requested to bring back the terms of reference for the recreation committee. I have, I think, captured the suggestions that were put forward by the councillors. I deliver them for your consideration right now. If you have anything, I can try to write it down, but I may come back to you afterwards individually and then you either get it in writing or meet with you then.
Councillor Ivanov?
Membership of the meet, it says up to two councillors and I think we, there was going to be three councillors on that committee.
That was the original and then I dropped it to two based on the discussion.
Yeah, or at least a minimum of, a minimum of two councillors. I think there should have three on that committee. I think the concern was quorum having four, but I think, I thought we agreed on three councillors at the last meeting.
Three councillors, okay.
Councillor Owens?
Yeah, there was one other thing that I didn't notice in the original round and that was that the chairperson was to be the official spokesperson of the committee to council. And what I've observed as a reporter and what I know of from serving on committees, usually that is the staff member who makes the presentations to council. So I, no, you're not agreeing with me?
Well, from my experience is you have actually two entities there. Staff will still report to council as to whatever council may be asking, but it could be that the committee has, is presenting us something totally different. So it could go both ways, I guess, I suspect councils. Or if I could suggest a compromise, chairperson or delegate, or person that's delegated to, then it could be staff or another person.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. It's just, I just found it out of luck with what I've seen done historically, but that's a good solution. Thanks, Wolf.
The recreation user fees were brought forward at the end of last year and the practice usually has always been presented for council's consideration, but they're actually only put into effect in July. These we're bringing back and asking for direction at this point. The reason being that we do need to, we are preparing our budgets and this is, this will be holding up the budget process if we don't have the fees verified and so we can make our projections. I'm suggesting to council that, and I'm sorry, council had wanted the user fees to be reviewed by the recreation committee. I'd like to put forward two proposals. One is, okay, we hold the course, let the committee review the fees and we'll have to adjust the budget process. Alternatively, we could ask council to consider, let these fees stand for 2019, have the recreation committee review the fees for 2020, and then we can build it into that process, especially considering that there has been conversation at the table about programming. So that my recommendation would be that pass for the 2019 and postpone discussion for 2020.
Thank you.
Shall I proceed with the next item then?
She's going to do a resolution right now.
Too much coffee.
So I have a resolution that's moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Stacey White, that the CAO bring back the proposed complex user fees for council's consideration for 2019 and that the 2020 fees be put to the recreation committee prior to council passing.
All in favor? Unanimous? Downtown art wall, we'll call on Brian Bronson. Brian, you want to use that?
Right here.
Yeah, and make sure the mic is on, microphone. Green light's on?
Yeah, we're there, okay. Thanks very much. What I'm bringing forward to council today is a request to assist us in the downtown art gallery that's been up in the area between the old Royal Bank building and I think the Pearl Glass Store downtown. In about 2010, that area was razed when a number of buildings were taken down and so a group of us got together and we've, over the last number of years, tried to enhance that area with a downtown art project, a photographic project. In the past, the town has supported us this year. What we've asked in the 2019 year is for the Rotary Club's assistance and so they've sponsored us this year. So there is no cost to the town for the gallery this year. What we are requesting is that you assist us as you have in the past in both taking down the work that is there currently and also putting back up the new work. That's the first request to council. The second one, on behalf of the members of the photographic club, is that if the town does not have use for the photographs that are the town's property, then they would like them back and I would ask council to consider that request as well.
Brian, first of all, on behalf of council, thank you and your group for the great work that they do and the artistic level is great as well. Lot of positive comments and we look forward to your work going forward.
Great, thank you.
Any comments from councillors? Questions? Councillor Owen?
Okay, Brian, you'll have to clarify my memory. The photographs that are up now, who paid to have them printed and known?
Those are the town's photographs, right?
Yeah, I know, I know the town owns them, but, so the town paid to have?
Yes, yes.
Okay. At this point, I'm not willing to give them away, simply because it's taxpayers' money. I'm willing to sell, personally, I'm willing to sell them back to the photographers at the cost of making them, which replenishes the taxpayers, but I don't think it's right just to offer them free. I appreciate what they do, they dress up the downtown, but, you know, that's where I stand. When you talk about giving away taxpayers' money, I tend to draw the line. I don't have a problem with using town labour to put up and take down the signs this year. But again, we don't have a lot of extra money, period. The town is in difficult financial straits and I don't know where the rest of council stands, but I would just put this suggestion out that perhaps your group puts a contingency in place for future years, because I'd like to see the project go on.
I think you're assuming that we have any stake in this. We have no stake. In other words, what happens is that we get the photographers, we set a theme, the photographers go out and take the photograph, they come back with the photographs, we select them. I do all of the enlarging, I do all of the editing. We take that to the printer, the printer prints them up and then we put them up again. And so the actual photographers who do the work have nothing. They get nothing out of this at all, other than they've given their photographs to the town for the use of the town for a period of time. And so in deference to what you've said, I think that the town has benefited from what's gone up there and so that if those folks need them back again, they'll go up and I'm sure they'll enhance the town in other places, but that's my position on it, Rick.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that, it's just that it is the taxpayer that paid for the enlarging. And I'm not big, if we had extra money, Brian, I'd be the first guy saying, yeah, give it to them. And I appreciate what you say, they did enhance the town.
I think the town has got to, and if I can't editorialize here, the 100th anniversary committee has done an incredible amount of work and the town is volunteers. We're volunteering in this town. I think that if the town wants to continue to encourage volunteerism, then there has to be a stake that the town has it in as well. And so I appreciate what you're saying, Rick, but it's falling on my deaf ears at this point when we're looking at volunteerism within the community. That is a major, major part of this town going forward from my standpoint.
And I have to agree with you, Brian. If they're going to sit in storage and gathering dust, if we didn't sell them as you recommended, I don't know how we had put a price on it, in all fairness, and they donated their work. I think it's a nice gesture of appreciation, so I would support that. Councillor Ivanov?
That's my opinion too. I think that if these photographers have taken these photographs and have put them up and we've had them for two or three years and they've done them in prior years also, that having these things sitting in some sort of a storage shed taking up space because we want to peddle them, I think that's, that's a waste of space and a waste of, a waste of money and photographers, if we have no other use for them, if we have use for them, let's put them up somewhere. If we have no other use for them, let's let the photographers have them back.
Councillor White?
Mr. Bronson, do you know if all the photographers are wishing to take them back? Or are there a few that perhaps?
It was, I don't know that, Stacey. As far as I know, they won't all be going. I think there are some that would like them back. I'm assuming that others will not want them back. You'll remember the last time we took them down, we found other places around the town to put them up, and I mean, that's still the option if we've got spots around the town that can be used.
So I was just, with the procurement policy, there is an option to auction pieces that we no longer need. So if perhaps not everybody wants their photo, their print back, we could actually auction off the rest during festivals, sorry, homecoming and maybe make a donation back so we won't run into this.
Wonderful suggestion, Stacey.
Yeah, from our perspective, I'm sure that in the glasses I'm getting from our Rose Foreman, he probably doesn't have too many places he can put artwork that it would survive, so that would be ideal. I think that then leads to the question, what is the timeline for it so that we don't have them in storage for too long? And would, could we ask your committee to assist us with making them advertised to the public so that if there's an auction for the pieces that aren't being taken back, that we can move that forward? So, and I think the last part I need to clarify because staff is looking at me. Where does the dollars come from? That would be from the tourism budget. I would allocate that in the budget meetings tomorrow. I know I have to answer that, sorry.
Councillor Owen?
Once, once again, I've been upstaged.
No, everybody's entitled to your opinion here.
No, 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 that's fine. I like Stacey's idea, I like it a lot, okay? And I would suggest that the time to do that is during the 100th anniversary when people are here and they want to take a piece of Kirkland Lake back with them. And you know what? We don't have to find spaces for them, hopefully, and we're not, we're doing a good thing with taxpayers' money and that's certainly an excellent idea and my hat goes off to you, Stacey, even though I don't want to, but you know, that's the way it is. Great idea.
In terms of a timeline, you were asking about the, we would want to put up the work for the beginning of the 100th anniversary, which I think begins on the 22nd of June, so sometime the week prior to that. Where we're heading, the work is being selected on the 14th of May, it is being presented to the Rotary Club on the 25th of May, because they're sponsoring us and so they're going to see the work that's been chosen, first of all. And so after the 25th of May is the time that I get it into the printer. And so they would be ready to go up for the 22nd.
Steve, could I ask that you add that to your calendar? And can I ask that you respect my tourism budget? Thank you. And Brian, could you deal directly with Steve then? It'd be a lot easier.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you, Brian.
So I have two resolutions concerning this. One is moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. The council approved the town crews work with the downtown art wall project coordinator to change the art exhibit for the 100th anniversary celebrations.
All in favor? Opposed?
And the second one is moved by, sorry.
I did.
And the second one is moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Rick Owens, Owen, sorry. The council approves the past photographers be permitted to reclaim their own panels if they are not needed in other places around town and that those pieces not reclaimed or replaced be auctioned off as surplus material.
All in favor? Opposed? Economic development website, Wolf?
In my other life, I secured funding with the federal and provincial government for a project that encompasses the community improvement plan, a land inventory for moving forward with industrial and commercial development, and a marketing component. As part of the marketing component, I believe that today's day and age, the website is by far the most powerful tool that we have. Went out to an RFP and we received two quotations. I'm recommending that we be directed to negotiate an agreement with Civic Live. I need to point out Civic Live is actually a component of West Communications, it's, just to be clear on that. The price is $11,750. It is 90% funded by the federal and provincial government. I'm working under extremely tight timelines, but I believe that with the assistance of other staff and partners, we should be able to bring a concept forward to the economic development committee, get their committee's input and guidance, and have this website substantively completed by June 1st. That does not mean it's going to be a great release, it means that the website is up and running and can, we can work with the content after that.
Any comments? Questions? That'll come back as a bylaw?
The next item is the schedule for meetings with the finance committee. This is an opportunity for members of council to meet with the department managers and to go through the budgets on a fairly detailed level. The schedule has been, well, it's presented within your package. There will be some changes as we go along to accommodate other factors or other things that may occur. For example, museum manager has been ill, that item will move from March 20th to, I think, March 27th. We will confirm that with you on an ongoing basis as well, March 26th. If you see what's there, that's a very heavy agenda. Very likely, we will be splitting that in part, in half and carrying out part of it at the end of the preliminary schedule, simply to keep everybody alive and awake throughout this. The other items, they will be presented to you with a, we will also be asking council for some direction as we go forward and any kind of comments that we can build in. It is a preliminary discussion for you, so you have a chance to see and understand and ask questions and give us a direction and we'll come back with something that's more concrete later on.
Any questions?
I would just like to make a comment that we've started these meetings as full meetings open to the public. They are full council meetings, so we will start with a meeting with, as we normally do. If we do not have a quorum of council, the meeting will be cancelled and we will just carry on with staff meetings with whatever council members are here. We wanted to do this just so that we could open it up to a quorum of council attending if a quorum wanted to come, so this we found was the best way to do it. The meetings will take place one way or the other.
So, Joanne, just to clarify, if there isn't a quorum, it's just a meeting, a finance meeting?
A staff meeting, yes.
Can the public still?
Yes, we figured that the staff, that the public would be here, we would just carry on the meeting anyways.
Okay.
But not open, it would not be a formalized meeting.
The treasurer? Sherry Matthews? On the OMPF funding allocation for 2019?
So it's just mainly that the Ministry of Finance has now actually sent out the official notification for the allocation for 2019 Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund. So I just wanted to give some background and context as to how that number has actually arrived at. And just to kind of give the background that the town, the fact that the town actually gets the dollar value that it does because it's a northern municipality and it's considered, it has challenging fiscal circumstances. So I just wanted to outline exactly what they mean by that. So we're getting the same amount as last year, which is $6,226,600. And as per the letter that came out from the Ministry of Finance, they're maintaining the current structure of the OMPF for 2019. Northern and rural municipalities with the most challenging fiscal circumstances continue to have their guarantee enhanced up to 100% of the prior year's allocation, which is what the town of Kirkland Lake falls under. The OMPF is under review and the government plans to consult with municipalities to ensure that the OMPF program is sustainable and focused on the northern and rural municipalities that need the funding the most. The government is committed to announcing the 2020 allocations well in advance of the municipal budget year so that municipalities have the appropriate time to plan. The other comment I wanted to make is if anybody wants to compare the town of Kirkland Lake to other municipalities, all of the allocation notices are available online. If you type in OMPF and go to the site, you can draw up anyone from Ontario. As to what makes up the OMPF allocation, there's actually five components. A lot of how they determine those components, it's based on the number of households. So just to give you the background, our number for 2019 actually dropped by 23 households. The other thing is, one of the components is called the Northern and Rural Municipal Circumstances Index. It ranges from 1 to 10, ours is 9.1. And what that means is the lower that index, it would be a relatively positive fiscal circumstances, the higher it is, it's more challenging. So like I say, out of 10, we're at 9.1. The other one is, there's a total weighted assessment per household. For the town of Kirkland Lake, it's almost $123,000, while the median is actually $273,000. So with respect to the five components, there's the Assessment Equalization Grant. We roughly get $2.5 million, which is actually a decrease of $65,000. And it's, it's to provide funding to municipalities with limited property assessment. The next component is the Northern Communities Grant. Roughly, we get $1.1 million. It provides funding to all northern municipalities in recognition of their unique circumstances. There was actually a decrease to us of almost $8,000 for this year. The next component is the Rural Communities Grant. We roughly get $620,000. It provides funding to rural municipalities in recognition of their unique circumstances or unique challenges, and there was a decrease of almost $8,000. And then the Northern and Rural Fiscal Circumstances Grant is roughly $1 million. It provides additional targeted funding to northern municipalities based on their fiscal circumstances, decrease of almost $36,000. Now, as we mentioned, the OMPF for the town of Kirkland Lake for 19 stayed the same, but I've just rhymed off a bunch of decreases. What happens is the fifth component is called the Transitional Assistance. So we actually ended up, they gave us $889,000. That was the number required to bring us back up to the 6.2 million. And that one, it ensures that we actually get 100% because not all northern municipalities would have got 100%, some of them would have only got 90% of their 2018 allocation. So like I say, it was basically just to give you an outline of what makes up the grant, why we actually got the same number as we did before, and just to let you know they are looking at it for 2020 and they're saying that they'll tell us enough in advance before the 2020 budget. So the other thing on the agenda for today is, it's mainly a housekeeping item. It's a requirement under section 284 of the municipal act, so on or before March 31st, we're required to bring to council an itemized statement on the remuneration and expenses paid in the previous year to each member of council or as a member of a local board and other, and other persons that are, that sit on some of the local boards, like say the police services board. So in 2018, we actually kind of had two councils. So the council that finished on November 30th, it would have been under bylaw 15040 and the new council's under bylaw 18149. As far as the local boards, that would be the DSAB and the Health Unit, and the numbers presented there are actually provided to us, so we use those numbers and we just populate our spreadsheet for that. And the only other comment I just wanted to make is that under the municipal act, section 284 subsection 4, despite the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, these statements are provided under, provided under section 1 are public records, so that's why we do disclose that information.
I have a resolution that's moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. The council has been presented with the 2018 summary of allowances and travel for members of council in accordance with section 284.1 of the municipal act.
All in favor? Unanimous? Rob Adair, fire chief? Funding agreement?
We were approached by Indigenous Services Canada to start up a funding agreement, just in case we decide to be a host community. It'll speed the process along for recouping any money we spend. Any questions?
The man a few words, yes. The agreement is broadly used throughout Ontario and other provinces as well. And The agreement is broadly used throughout Ontario and other provinces as well, and it covers off a number of the most important issues, both legal, insurance, whatever. But as the chief said, it, most important, it expedites the entire process of when emergency hits, that we don't have to sit there and try to file paperwork, and we get reimbursed as quickly as possible.
The only question, one sec. The only question I have is, if they do have evacuation, where are we going to put these people? With all the hotels?
The Super Eight has actually said that they're willing to host.
It also depends on what the call will be. It could be that there's twenty people coming that are in need of special assistance, perhaps we could host that. It could also be that, and they try to keep the families together, that we simply wouldn't have the numbers of rooms. At the end of the day, it's council's decision if you wish to act on this or not. It is a good point, because there are a number of contractors and the construction season will be kicking into overtime, and we seldom get more than two, three hours of notification that something's happening. The other challenge for the municipality will be is that we find the, thanks to Rob and Renzo, they have a full community emergency management plan, but we are still a little weak on some of the positions that have to be filled or doubled up on. So we'll be working on that. I'm specifically referring to Information Manager. We have that mixed with another position. I'd like to see that. That's something that we can work on. It's a housekeeping issue, but we'll be ready for it. Anything that comes over, the council's decision.
Councillor White?
Just out of curiosity, when was the last year that we were actually a host community?
I think that's two or three years ago now, eh?
I think it was fourteen or fifteen. I think it was fifteen, to be honest.
Fifteen, I believe. From a funding standpoint, they do, it's reasonably, it's more than fair, I would say, from what I recall. I know we don't have the exact figures here, but it is, it's fairly decent.
Yeah, I'm new to this, but the whole idea behind this was, you're going to get your money faster than you did in the past. Everything's already set up to receive it.
Any questions? That'll come back as a bylaw. Thanks, Rob.
Time up again. The next one's an agreement with the MNRF. We were in one from, I think, two thousand thirteen to two thousand and eighteen, so this has come due again. They want us to renew the agreement. It's pretty much an insurance thing where if a fire starts on municipal lands, spreads to crown land, we're not responsible for the money it would cost to extinguish the fire. It would be a five-year agreement, going from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-four. But it's optional whether we want to enter into the agreement with them.
Councillor Owens?
Yeah, when I was reading this, it works both ways. If it starts on crown land, and this one I had to read it many times to be able to get my head around it and the fact we didn't have the maps and help. So, as a comparison, when that fire happened in two thousand twelve, it started within the municipality, but is that considered crown land or town land?
It would all depend on, there's a map. I guess it wasn't in the attachment.
No, I, we didn't know, they were too big to fit on the, I don't think I photographed your big enough of that.
It all depends where the boundaries are.
Yeah, but if we compared to the last fire in two thousand twelve, like that started within our municipality, but that was on crown land as well.
I'd have to look at the map to be able to answer that.
Actually, I think there was a number of landowners involved around the Ammickugini area. We were, I think there was Roscoe, there was a few others, but there was also Crown there, but they took it over.
Just, so if the fire, like, because our territory goes up to Esker Park, so if the fire starts around just south of Esker, we don't have the capabilities of putting that out, but are we on the hook if it does?
That would be crown land, not municipal land.
But it's within our municipality, though, we're pretty big. If you look at the numbers, that's twenty-six thousand hectares.
But it doesn't mean that you own the land within the municipal boundaries.
Okay, that's what I was, okay.
That's right.
It's our boundaries, but we don't own the land.
Pretty much, our area, if I remember the map correctly, is like the town and like alongside the road to Goodfish. Anything outside of that's going to be crown land.
Councillor White?
Sorry, so there was an amount of about eight million or eight thousand on one of the charts. Do we pay that yearly? It's like, bad question.
You caused that.
So it's the application of comprehensive protection charges to land types. So it was, I don't know if it's an example, but it says Crown owes municipality zero. Municipality owes the Crown, sorry, eight thousand, six hundred, twenty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Is that something we have to pay yearly?
Yearly, yes.
Okay.
Is that coming back as a, coming back as a bylaw? Okay.
It does go up every year by the CPI. Like it went up, I think, two hundred dollars from eighteen to nineteen.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Rob. That's coming back as a bylaw? Joanne?
So this is a request to, for a councillor or a member of council to attend the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities Conference, which is being held in Sudbury on May eighth to tenth. As per our procedural bylaw, members of council do have to get a resolution from council in order to attend these conferences. Generally, staff also gets permission at the same time. We have had one, Mayor Carly is asking to attend Phenom. It's going to cost approximately eleven hundred dollars. That's the cost of the conference, that's the mileage, and that's three nights accommodation approximate. I'm, these are just, I'm not so sure how much the accommodation is, but we just put in a hundred and fifty dollar a night. And it's up to council how many people they want to send.
Are there any other councillors interested in attending?
So I do have a resolution that is moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council approves attendance to the Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities Conference in Sudbury, May eighth to tenth, two thousand nineteen, at an approximate cost of eleven hundred dollars per attendee to one person, Mayor Pat Kyl.
All in, questions?
We are missing two of our council members this evening. I don't know if we should defer this until they're back next week, like if, until, or put a contingency that we can ask them this evening and see if either of them would like to go?
If they're interested in attending, I think we could bring it back to council to approve, second one or?
If I could get this approved now, though, because we're trying to get the early bird pricing, and if you don't mind, what we'd like to do then is, I can, we can ask them if either of them are interested in attending. We can bring back another resolution with their names on it at that time also.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? The one hundredth Anniversary Committee? Sue? Sue Gemo and? And Lynn? Sue Gemo, Mike Gemo? And Sarah? Ashley Billard.
I have a letter I would like to read before you speak, Ashley, if you don't mind, if that's good with council and the mayor, if that's okay. It is the goal of the one hundred Anniversary Committee to make a success of our town's centennial celebrations by providing as many welcoming activities to thousands of visitors as past reunions. We want our guests to feel right at home in Kirkland Lake. In order for this to happen, it takes multiple volunteers, donations, creativity, and the full cooperation of all. This is an opportunity to shine as a community that they love to visit and/or live in. The welcome mat is out, should be our message. We not only ask for support from mayor and council, but all of our citizens. Please register on our website or come into the KL one hundred headquarters to ask about how you can participate. Presently, there is some concern and negativity on social media. Our door is open, and we want our community to see the benefits from the confirmed events, not only those being hosted by us, but also by our businesses, organizations, service clubs, schools, churches, and surrounding area. The KL one hundred anniversary consists of a small group of dedicated volunteers, taxpayers, and business people from our community who have worked tirelessly for more than two years to make this celebration an outstanding success. Conservatively, we estimate that six thousand to eight thousand visitors will come to Kirkland Lake to partake in the celebrations based on the nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-eight, and two thousand and six reunions. Every business in Kirkland Lake, including restaurants and bars in our area, will benefit significantly through this large influx of people. Frankly, we are concerned about our capacity to provide lodging, food, and drinks. But please join us in supporting your community to prove our slogan is "Good as Gold" at a hundred years old. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, and I would encourage every councillor to drop in and see Sue and Lynn. Joanne and I spent a half, three quarters of an hour there the other day. It was very informative and appreciate all the hard work the volunteers are doing. It's coming along really well. Ashley?
Actually, I see Mike.
Sorry, Mike, I'm sorry, Mike. Sue, you're going to do a little, do you want to go over what you presented to us? Just the highlights, or?
I'm going to let Mike speak on the one point that we're trying to make about the approving...
Different things, different things. I was involved in the first two high school reunions, eighty-eight, ninety-eight, as co-chair. And I've handed out some write-ups that were in the local papers, as well as the, the last picture shows you how many people we had downtown for the parade. And you see on the middle handout, the numbers we had for the reunion back then was eight thousand people. Now, that was the first high school reunion that we ever had, so a lot of people came back. It was a little less the second one and the third ones, because, you know, some people didn't come back every time. We haven't had a town reunion since the seventy-fifth, and we're getting a lot of comments, people coming back. We don't have numbers yet, but we expect people in the thousands. And we're down to four bars in town, four or five restaurants. So if we get, say, four or five thousand people, everybody's going to benefit. Bringing people into town, everybody benefits. The merchants, the bars, and the restaurants. So just to make a point, having experienced this, we need to be ready. You don't want people coming to town, and after six o'clock, there's nothing to do. And there's a lot of mini reunions coming down. Some people are just coming back for some of those mini reunions. But we are going to get a lot of people coming back to town. I know some of these councillors are new, they're younger. Some of them might not have been born when we had the eighty-eight reunion, I'm not sure. And I know we were overwhelmed with that first reunion. And I think the ones that were here, Rick, you probably covered some of them.
What I remember of the reunions is they were great. What I don't remember, I don't want recalled.
No problem. Back then, we had a lot of events planned in the evening at the high school, in the football field at the back. We're doing, we're copying some of the things that were popular, which are, we called them wine and cheese back then, now they're meat and greet. We've had the Print Corral, not the first one, but the second one, and possibly the third one, which were quite popular. But you're limited to how many people you can have on that lot. So if you get four or five, and I went around to all the bar owners, the total capacity of the four bars in town is just over five hundred people. So, you know, what do people do? I know we got a little side events going on, but that's basically just to make some of the new councillors aware of what we're expecting to come into town. And I think everybody will benefit from it.
Sue, I noticed, well, you mentioned that when we met with Joanne and I the other day, this has been constantly updated, that there's new events being added, so...
Yes, so what I've handed out is our confirmed events to date. I think the council and mayor and media need to realize how many people have already come on board with confirmed events. We still have many that we're working on. We don't post any of them till they've got all their ducks in a row. There's no maybes here. These are, these are getting done. I want to also just mention that in one of the newspaper write-ups from before, I know that one of the comments was, there's not many people registered. Well, I can look around this table and I know who's registered and who has not. I would strongly advise that if by registering, you get to show the outside visitors that are coming, that Kirkland Lake wants to be part of this celebration. So I would ask that, you know, get your names on the participant attendees list. It would greatly help our committee. Thanks.
Any comments or questions that we have with the committee? Councillor White?
Sorry, Mr. Gemo, you stated that you're afraid that after six o'clock, there'll be nothing to do. Has the committee contacted all the local bars and restaurants to ensure that maybe they'll be staying open later for that period of time?
I spoke, I went personally to each bar owner. There's only four in town that are actually bars. A couple of them now have changed their work thing to just takeouts or whatever. And one was definitely in favor, one sitting on the fence, and two were against it. You know, I, they express their concerns, but I don't think, they're thinking it's a regular Tuesday night, or Wednesday night, or Thursday night in Kirkland Lake. This thing's going to last for two weeks. Not everybody's coming for two weeks, but there's going to be a rollover people. So, on an ongoing basis, you know, we're going to have a couple thousand people here. And if you only can accommodate five hundred, where'd the other fifteen hundred or twenty-five hundred go? Some, yeah, some people, some restaurants, you know, you're killing my supper hour. Well, not really, because you've got, you've got, some people are going to come and eat between four and six, and if some people are at the meat and greet or go to the Print Corral, or whatever we're going to call it, eight-thirty, we're closing up. Oh, it's eight-thirty, jeez, we haven't eaten, we've got to go somewhere to eat. They're going to get a second supper hour. And I think, and some of them have limited hours, and I told them, I said, you better be ready to open at noon and not at four-thirty with your regular hours, because people are going to be downtown and they need a place to go. If they're not, if they're just walking around instead of going, if they're not involved in any of the other mini reunions.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I thought I knew where I stood on this. Thanks for coming and confusing me. But I think Mike does make a good point. If there's two thousand people in town, I'd say ninety-five percent of them are... If there's 2,000 people in town, I'd say 95% of them are, I won't use the word drinkers, partiers. There won't be places for those people to go and have their mini-reunions with their old friends. As for the restaurants, I've heard that argument almost going, well, probably going back to 1982, and it had to do with Legion shopping stops. And the number of the local restaurants said, "Well, that was unfair competition." But I never viewed it that way, because when I go to a shopping stop, it's to support a certain group. And a lot of people only go to those shopping stops because they want to show their support for that group. In this case, we have 100th Anniversary. Potentially 2,000 people in town at any one time. And if people are able, if not for-profit volunteer organizations are able to make some much-needed funds by holding events, I don't view that really as competition. I do appreciate, though, what the restaurants and the bars are saying is that, you know, "We're taxpayers, we're here all the time." I think there has to be some give and take. But if you get the attendance that you are expecting, I think there's probably more than enough business to go around to accommodate everyone.
I agree with you on those comments. This past weekend, there was a hockey tournament here, and I know somebody went to a restaurant, they couldn't get a seat, because the out-of-town teams were with their parents while they're eating. Because you were bringing people into town.
I was at Tim Hortons two, three weeks ago, and I was talking to somebody, I think they were from out of town. They had gone to three different restaurants, and none of them were open. And they ended up at Tim Hortons because there was nothing open. So I don't think we have an overabundance of places to eat.
Well, we're hoping that they extend their hours.
Well, if they're smart, they will.
Councillor White?
Rick, I really don't think it's fair to compare what happens on a normal Tuesday night around Kirkland Lake to what's going to be happening during the 100th Anniversary. As far as restaurants having to close down early, there is just not enough business oftentimes that restaurants are closed. There's just not enough business. There's not enough business, and they do have to cut their costs. That is a sad reality of our day-to-day life in Kirkland Lake now. It will be quite different during the 100th Anniversary, but business owners have to do what they have to do to keep their doors open the rest of the year. So that's, I don't know if that was a fair assumption, sorry.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Yes, I think it would help if, I think it would help if... If the restaurants ran breakfast, lunch, and supper. It's very hard to find a breakfast place in Kirkland Lake, other than the big chains. So I think that's something that they could certainly do to help. You'll probably notice in that handout that Sue gave you that we have 48 committed events already, and that's from service clubs and individuals, churches, et cetera, who are going to help feed the masses and water them and everything else. So, yeah, it's pretty impressive, really, how people have stepped forward in this town. Not only that, but in volunteering and providing us with what we need.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I have a problem drawing a line in the sand here. Are we going to go to the different churches and say, "No, you can't put on that supper? No, you can't put on that breakfast because you're competing with business?" I mean, this is a special event. It's not something that's happening week after week after week. So, you know, there are churches in this town that are heavily relying on whatever revenue they can generate from those events to keep their doors open. They're also active in the community in providing social services and spiritual services to residents, you know? So if we cut off their means during the events, we're also hurting the community. Because some of those churches are, I know the church that I'm involved in is very close to closing its doors. And I don't think we're alone. I think a lot of the churches, they're in the same boat, because the churches were built when the town was bigger. The churches were built at a time when insulation wasn't a great, you know, thing to think about, and the congregations had gotten smaller. But they still provide a much-needed service that ultimately saves taxpayers' money. Because if someone can get what they need from a church, they don't have to go to the social services to get that same thing. So I appreciate what the businesses are saying. I understand. I'd be ticked off too, probably, if I were them. But I think we have to look at the global picture and not just, you know, small things.
Yeah, Mike, I'll get back to you, Casey, in a sec. Mike, you can elaborate on this, and there's a bit of a misconception out there, because the committee member, or you as part of the committee, did go to the different restaurants and talk to them.
Restaurants and bars.
Yeah, they were invited to participate at these, whether it be at the Civic or the Princess. There's no reason why they can't be there as well? Is that correct?
Yes, I've talked to them, and they're invited if they want to participate in some of our events. But if you look right now, if you want bacon and eggs in the morning, there's two places, Fern's and Krabby Patties. That's all you got. Oh, sorry, McDonald's, that's, well, it's not bacon and eggs, you've got McMuffin or whatever. And Tim Hortons sells the same thing. But if you want a regular breakfast, you've got two restaurants.
Oh, and the Arco Club.
That's right. Which they, yeah, which they operate all the time, anyways.
Councillor Owen? First, I'd just like to thank you guys from the get-go through work. I've had the opportunity to work with the committee. You included ECJV, the French High School, in this from the get-go, and I think that's pretty commendable, because it's not always been the case for the French High School. So I think, I just wanted to put it out there, thank you on that one. Second, I just want to make sure for the ribs, Rib Fest in August. So if a local restaurant wants to have a table there, or a kiosk, and sell pulled pork sandwiches, or another type of food but ribs, and they can fill out that RFP process, and they can have a table or a food truck there or something?
Can I read my letter? Because I have comments about the Rib Fest.
Okay.
Only because of social media, again.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting...
I really wanted to put it down into a letter. So I wrote, "The KL 100 Anniversary Committee and the Kirkland Lake Rotary Club hosted a Rib Fest event on August 18, 2018. How this came about was Lynn and I wanted to bring something new to our committee. We paid our own travel costs, accommodation, and meals in order to go to Subri on the September-long weekend to check this event out. We met with the seven rib trucks and asked if they would be interested in coming to Kirkland Lake as part of their festival's tour. All said no. As Kirkland Lake's population is considered too small, but one rib trucker said his daughter might come as she drives up this way to an event in Thunder Bay. After much negotiating, we were pleased that the Route 55 barbecue truck would come for this one-day event. The only thing we couldn't guarantee was it would be successful. Like all outdoor events, the weather plays a big factor, and they were prepared to take the loss. The KL Rotary Club came on board as Mike Gimo, Amanda Le Prairie, and Mike Marinick agreed to take on the licensing, insurance, and the volunteers needed to run the beer tent. Last year, we had to personally call people to come and participate at this event. We had the Red Squirrels Collection, the KL Soap Ladies Watch for Moose Designs, Diane Charbonneau, Mary Shonsby, Cousines, It's So Good, Sting Race, and the Tex Centennial Library. This year, people are calling us. We want this to be bigger and better. We want to mention that our partnership with the Rotary Club has been excellent. Thanks in big part to Mike Marinick for getting local support, Amanda Le Prairie for organizing the beer tent, and Mike Gimo and Mark Whalen for setup and takedown, and to many volunteers that helped out. As members of the Rotary, KL Rotary, all monies raised are donated back into the community. Any person or business can take part in Rib Fest. The only thing is, they can't sell ribs. We have a contract with the Route 55 barbecue truck. Last year, we had Taylor Fries, the Beaver Tail Truck, and the Popsicle Stand. Come and sell anything else and pay the fee that all our vendors, our craft fair artists and artisans paid last year. Our theme is country and western. We welcome all local businesses to participate in this one-day event. Please apply through the 100th Anniversary Committee. Thank you."
So they can? So basically, if a restaurant wants to have their truck there, whatever kiosk they have, they can just, they fill out that RFP that's on your website?
The Taylor Fries and the Beaver Tails did not have a stipulation, but the contract with the rib truck was no selling of other ribs, which we didn't see as a problem. Last year, nobody approached us after the event, and it wasn't mentioned till it hit social media a few weeks ago that it was a problem. And I did invite that person to come and speak to me at the headquarters so that we could maybe work with her and come up with something else that she could do. She didn't come. But I did try.
Mike?
Through the Rotary Club, I'm familiar with the, some people that I work with, with the Oakville Rotary Club on another matter. They put on a Rib Fest down there every year. They get 25,000 people. It's a two-day event. They have several rib trucks. And these ribbers, when they go around, there's more than one truck. It's like a contest that they have. They're taking a chance coming to Kirkland Lake with the size of our population. If it rains and nobody shows up, what happens?
They won't come back.
They won't come back. And we were lucky to get them, and like Sue said, the only reason they're coming here is because they're going to Thunder Bay. So they come up with one truck, it's only a one-day event here, it's not a two-day, and then they take off for the following weekend up in Thunder Bay. So we're lucky to have them. And, you know, I've always wanted to go to a Rib Fest. Sue and Lynn went down to Subri, and they said they had a great time, and the other communities do it, and they have several rib trucks.
Seven, seven in Subri.
I'm glad, Sue, you cleared up that misconception that the exclusivity is only for the ribs. Anybody can set up other foods. Because that's how it came across on social media.
It did.
By not necessarily that person you're talking about, but other people started feeding on it. That's not quite correct. Councillor Ivanov?
I want to congratulate the committee on, the 100th Anniversary Committee, on what they've done. I think they've done a great job organizing. I've been into your store, it looks great. I think the clothing, I've bought numerous items from you, well, probably way too many.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I love what you've done. I think you're going to have a great two weeks. I know it's contingent on weather. I think you're going to do an amazing job with bringing people into Kirkland Lake. I know I hear people talking about it all the time. I think that every business in Kirkland Lake will benefit when you bring these people to the community. I think your Rib Fest will be a super success. I know I was there last year, and the lineup was just so friggin' long, I turned around and went and ate at Vienna's. So, you know, and Vienna's wasn't dead, it was very busy in Vienna's, and it was around 2:00 in the afternoon after the lunch crowd had already gone through. And you guys were just jammed at Rib Fest. So I don't see where somebody would have a complaint about what's happening when you bring 1,000, 2,000, 5,000 people into Kirkland Lake. I think it should be a benefit to our entire community, and I wish you the best of luck.
I agree, because I think after this event, there'll be more than one rib truck wanting to come here. Any other comments, questions? Sorry, Casey?
So I'm looking at your agenda there, since the two last ones are being deferred, I mean, we don't ask questions on those right now, or is it going to come back?
We can answer questions.
It's just, I would curious, why did, like, I know there's a historic, way before my time, but there's the historic aspect of that corner, but had you guys considered Civic at all for the, and why did you guys pick that spot over Civic?
It's, it was done. It's been done. It was successful. It was a place to meet, to say to people, "Let's meet at the Print Beer Tent, and we can decide where we're going. You're either, you're heading out for supper, or you're heading to another event that's for that night, whether it be the cabaret, or whether it be the pub." And I do have the, I have the 75th schedule of the Diamond One, and there's actually a pub every night for the whole week at that time. So people would meet there and then go to wherever they were going. And you want people to be downtown. I don't want to be stuck out at Civic, everybody over there. You're not going to get traffic downtown. And that's what we were trying to help, to help, to have people meet there from wherever they were coming, and then disperse into, whether they're going to the Legion, or the White Eagle, or the, you know? Everybody's got plans, and they've got their, the tickets. Like even Camelot's Order, the two nights that, we sold out, those like that, they are gone. That's how fast it happened. And I would expect that our ladies reunion at the Legion is sold out, our XKL Men's is sold out. That's what's going to happen before we even get to the party. You know, people are going to come into town and look for tickets, and we can only hold so many people in each venue. And we're trying to host as many all over Kirkland Lake in order for people, if they can't get a ticket to that one event, they'll go to others. But that is a central location, and I think it's a great location. And it's not the committee making money. We're not making money. What we're doing is offering that spot so that the clubs that are interested, and I think I gave that out somewhere, but whether it be the Rotary, the Richelieu, the Knights Columbus, the, all these people that are interested in hosting one night, and whether it be the bars, or the Fed, like the Fed does the Blue Line Room at the Sports Complex, they're more than welcome to come down and host a night or two. We would love to have them. We've got two weeks of trying to get spots where people can go.
Have they shown interest? Have any bars shown interest?
Possibly the Fed. And it only runs to 8:30. It's not all night. It's 4:30, 8:30. Some people then are going to go to the Chapu's reunion, Polynaeum Irish reunion, but there's still a lot of people that don't have tickets for these events. So where are they going to go? They're going to go to the bars, restaurants.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I remember enjoying some social time at that corner, both when the building was standing and after the building wasn't standing. And if I remember correctly, the last time that that was used, now it was very popular, but I believe Billy's Bar, or fact similarly, and maybe operating under a different name, was operating right across the road. And, you know, if it's, you say it's only open to 8:30, well, the serious party is just getting warmed up by then, they're going to go somewhere else.
Exactly. And I'm not sure how many we can accommodate yet, we have to figure that out once we apply for the license. So it's, what, a 40 by 120-foot lot? So I don't know what the capacity is. It's not 3,000, 4,000. You're only going to get a couple hundred in there, maybe.
And I don't remember complaints, there were more bars in town when that operated there. Now, I wasn't on council or on any committee that would have come into, but I was a reporter, and I don't remember hearing any complaints about the fact that that small piece of ground was licensed for the reunion. So if it didn't hurt the businesses that were in, and there were more of them, I don't think it's going to hurt, I think it's going to help.
And they ran longer hours.
Yeah, I think it's going to help. It's going to draw the people down, and then they're going to start there and go in groups to the other locations. So I think it's a good thing.
Lynn?
Yeah, just two quick points. We're not interested in Civic. We want the people to go downtown. We want them to go to our stores. Some of them have even expressed that, "I can hardly wait to go and look at such-and-such when I'm back home," sort of thing. And the other thing is, we're only there for four hours. They're going to sit, meet friends there. "Hi, how are you?" It's going to start to get dark. Where are we going to eat? Then they're going to start looking for places for food. Though there will be some food at that event, too, but, yeah, no, we want to draw people into the downtown area so that everybody can participate. We're not really interested in Civic at all.
Well, I can, I think I can say this, on behalf of all of council members here today, we want to make this a very successful centennial celebration, so if there's anything we can do, we're... there's anything we can do, we're here to, and support you. And thank you for your presentation today. Clarified a number of different issues. Much appreciated.
So I'm not entirely sure if everyone wants me to present the report. I'm, I'm not sure if everyone's had a chance to read it. Essentially, the way that we, we looked at this was from a staff's perspective, and trying to take into consideration the, the issues may come up with insurance and things that we need to look at finalizing and making sure we have ultimate control over prior proceeding with any decisions being made. And then making sure council has what they need in terms of information to make a good decision. So by all means, there's a lot of respect here in terms of what the 100th Anniversary Committee is doing. This isn't meant to look like we're trying to put barriers in front of you. These are the things that our insurance company are concerned about, just experience working in the various departments, department heads, things that have, you know, made us question a couple things, and, and checking with various people to, to be sure that we're.
Would the Prin Beer Tent lot, as I would call it, not be run the same way as when we host a beer tent at Civic? Would the rules not follow the same?
That would be up to you and the liquor licensing. That's what we're waiting for, too.
Well, because that's what I did. I contacted Maria, asked her to send me the information for about the insurance. She sent me all the information from ACGO to make sure that I knew exactly. I have a checklist and make sure that we are running this event properly. And we would not go into this blind. We know what we're up against in, in terms of making sure that it's secure, making sure that everybody gets carded with a wristband, making sure we have security. Those are all things that have come up, and we've spoken to the clubs that showed interest, what their responsibilities would be, and what ours would be. So we have checked. I know it doesn't show in our report, but we, we do follow through with making sure that if we're going to run an event, it's run properly.
So I think one of the things that was brought up in this, this was conversations with various staff, was when you go to, to get your license, there's rules on setbacks from sidewalks. So one of the things was, okay, if you have a four-foot setback from the sidewalk on either side, and then you had to be cleared from a door on the building side. So if you're four feet in that way, how much room do you really have, and whether or not that's going to meet your needs? I'm not sure whether or not the rules have changed since.
But Ashley, I think Sue is right. Let, I, I would suggest anyway, let them get in touch with the liquor licensing.
For sure.
Sorry, the inspector. And he will communicate to them what the requirements are. You can come back to us. If they, once they know what the requirements are, they can also adjust their plans to try to accommodate that. And let's go with that one, I would say.
True.
Regarding the insurance, I'm speaking for Rotary's perspective here. Whenever we run an event, we have insurance. I email them down there to our insurer, here's what we're doing. Because I always have to, to prove it to somebody at the town when we're doing something, like at Heritage North, some of the functions we've run there. And I'm sure the Richelieu Club is in the same boat, and maybe some of the other organizations. Now, if it's another group that's doing it, they don't have, they're going to have to go and get their insurance and show us they have their own insurance on top of the town insurance.
Ashley, correct me if I'm wrong. It's not a question of their insurance. It's what our insurance company is asking of us for what we have to be prepared for, not about your insurance. Your insurance covers your, your spot and what you're doing. For us, it's, okay, what about the streets? What about the areas offside? That's what we need to deal with. We're not questioning your insurance.
Well, my insurance is the town's insurance.
But I don't mean the insurance associated with the event, but what else about the municipal operations? That's what we're trying to accommodate with that. Sorry, Mike, I cut you off there.
No, okay. No, I just, when we did Rib Fest last year, Rotary had their own insurance. It was, it was within the town's property. So we're almost double insured.
You are.
Let's hope we are.
Could I ask Mike or Sue, what is the amount of liability insurance that?
Oh, I didn't bring it.
Do you know, offense?
I believe it's $5 million. I think if we're dealing with municipality, I think you're going to be a $5 million.
I, I'd have to check to see what our Rotary coverage is. It's probably around there as well.
Further questions, comments?
I think the, the issue that our insurance again raises being more of a, a concern is the RV camping. That's a tougher one for us to get our heads around. And we would like to have some guidance from council as to how you want to go about that. The comments that, regarding water lane RV camp, they're on the screen now. Sorry, Lynn, I'm not pointing at, pointing at the TV in front of you. The concerns there were about safety, security, water, sanitation. And I know that most of the people coming with an RV, they probably can manage with sanitation, water and that. I'm not sure, Ashley, is there something specific you want to say on that? Or perhaps just leave it to, th- those are the concerns that we're having right now.
Okay, so I think the question was for us, I don't want to be at headquarters, and people are coming through our door and saying Culver's full, Escher's full, where can we park our Winnebago? Where can we park our RV? There's also in that write-up that you would require a site plan from individual taxpayers that have a extra lot next door to them, where they, their family comes home, and trust me, it happens every year, that we actually have families that come home to visit, and they bring their own trailer. And it's never been an issue for them to plug in next door and plug into the house to get hydro and, and camp for two weeks, you know, on, on their next door, on their family's property. So if it's private property, I, I feel, I think by reading that, we felt that, wow, the town's throwing up all these roadblocks that, so now people are not even allowed to come and park an RV, a Winnebago, a camper on their own family's lot. That makes no sense at all to the committee.
We're not throwing up roadblocks, but we're obligated to advise council on what the requirements are. That's all.
It's one thing to, to deny us water lane. It's another thing when it's, I think, already been a precedent set over the years, where I know for a fact, I can name you three people, four, five people, who their, their family comes up every year, and they're, they park next door, and they're allowed to plug into the house. I know. But you, exa-, no, I'm just saying, all of a sudden, it's like, we're having this big centennial, and we're going to need as many parking spots as we can. And to, to ask the taxpayer for a site plan and proof of insurance is beyond comprehensible. I, to me, it's mind-boggling. Sorry.
Counselor Owen?
Yeah, a site plan might be a bit much and a little expensive, if we're talking a typical site plan. No, okay, okay. Just to speak to why the town has regulations like that. On my street, there used to be a problem where people would come home for a month and park their trailer on the street and run an extension cord up to the house. Okay? And this happened summer after summer after summer. Now, Third Street's not a very wide street to start with, and my kids were young, so that was a, an additional safety hazard as far as I was concerned. I didn't officially complain to the town, but I sure got ticked off more than once. So the town was put into a position, because things like this, and, and even worst-case scenarios were happening all over town. People were abusing common, well, they weren't using common sense, let's put it that way. Council of the day, I believe, was more or less forced into taking action in order to protect, you know, neighborhoods, because people were just doing what they wanted, when they wanted, where they wanted. And, you know, in an ideal world, people use common sense. We wouldn't have these problems. So that's where the regulations come up. Now, I, I don't, I haven't talked to Ashley, so I don't know what the site plan is, but she's just assured me that it's not the $2,000 site plan that's required when you make a change to. So I, I feel better about that. That may be just an additional assurance to town officials that people are going to use common sense. I don't know, because I haven't had a real good chance to look at it yet.
Ashley?
Okay, just a comment. Okay, so parking RVs and trailers is not permitted. That's a zoning bylaw fraction. So if they haven't been caught, then that's probably why they're getting away with it. We work on a complaint basis, so as soon as someone does complain, that's typically when we have to deal with those issues. So it's not permitted. What this does is give you a way to allow it to happen, but then if we're allowing it to happen, then there needs to be rules and regulations on where this can happen. So if you live on a 33-foot lot and don't have a driveway, and you're going to park it in your front lawn, it's going to hang over two properties, you're going to have neighbors complaining, and it's going to cause bylaw enforcement to skyrocket. So what I tried to throw in was, okay, if you guys want to allow this to happen, here's what I need in order for us to proceed to maybe approve certain sites for allowing that to happen. So we're not getting into problems where you have recreational vehicles being parked on three properties in the front yard, or potentially, you know, pulling in the driveway, blocking, maybe it's a shared driveway. Someone wants to park in the middle of a shared driveway or running, if there's no control, I, I can see my whole summer being taken up by bylaw enforcement.
And again, it's for those exceptions.
Yes.
The rules are there.
Yes.
For somebody who comes in with an RV parked in the yard, hey, have fun. We don't want to be anything, any kind of problem like that. How do we deal with the other ones? Let's be as flexible as we can. That's what we want to do, too. But we have to understand that it's for, it's because we're obligated to bring these concerns forward. It's not that anybody is trying to throw up roadblocks or anything else. If we did not, then council will be able to put us on the carpet, and rightly so, give us a pretty good thrashing. We're bringing this stuff forward. How can we work around it? One of the ideas, too, is that support the, the whole concept that the RVs coming in, but let us prepare a brochure, a friendly brochure that says, these are things that you might want to watch out for. And that, put the onus on to the people that are coming in. Please be conscientious and responsive of the neighbors or anything like that. Common sense, just as Counselor said. But we just put it down, and it's a welcoming pamphlet as well. Perhaps you could even put coupons from the restaurants in the pamphlet to get them out and around. Just a suggestion.
Counselor White?
I, I knew about the bylaw. So that's my biggest concern, is that we do have this bylaw in place already, that this would contravene. And, and that's the thing. We're trying to make the rules as accommodating as we can without doing away with the bylaw that we have. So I understand that you feel that it is a roadblock, but I, maybe it's just a speed bump, because we have to do things by the rules.
It's the wording.
And we're trying.
I'm sorry. It's the wording. It's the wording of the, it's the way it is written about a site plan. There's nothing here about it being simple. It, there's no word here that it would be a simple site plan, or that they would have to go and show proper insurance coverage. And my only other comment was, from a staff's perspective, this exemption could result in a significant amount of staff time being dedicated for approving proposed locations. So it could lead to a significant amount of enforcement time during the 10-day event to ensure public and health, health and safety, as well as compliance with municipal insurance requirements. So it's almost a negative thing here about, it's not, let's try to work with you. It was, the, this is causing a problem for staff and for, you know, you're putting more work on, on the taxpayers, is the way I was looking at it.
It is a job of the planning department to point out to council what the bylaw is, first of all, and, and
As well as the cost.
Yeah, and the restrictions on it. We'll work around as best as we can, as Counselor White said. It may have come across a little heavy-handed, but it's not what it meant to be. Lynn?
Yes, and I think that's why we wanted it left to another time, is because we knew that those last two items would take up considerable time here at the meeting. So my suggestion would be is that we go ahead with the, the what, five, five that we're fairly comfortable with, and if we need more time, we take more time for those last two. That would be my suggestion.
I'll give Mike the last word, because he's been
I, I agree with Rick. I, I don't want to be driving around with campers, RVs parked all over the streets. I visualize this as in a private driveway, not across the front lawn, in the driveway. Yeah. And I know what you mean about the one on Third Street, because, you know, I drive around a bit, and, you know. And there's another, a couple other streets in town, same thing, and I go, park them in the driveway. Park your car on the street.
So I've, I've split all of these out into separate resolutions, so I'll keep five of them here. The first one is moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The council approves the 100th Anniversary Committee request to fly the centennial flag from April 1st to September 30th, 2019, at the Miners Memorial Monument and the Department of Fiscal Services, subject to other requests for flying flags.
All in favor? Approved, unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council approves the 100th Anniversary Committee request to hold a community yard sale on June 1st, 2019, at Kinross Park.
Questions?
Wants to get out of here?
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council approves the 100th Anniversary request to construct a fence in the empty lot at Fort Garmont Road West to accommodate the Tobern Mine Bureau, which is presently stored at the complex. I did have a picture of that, I thought. This one here. So they've asked me to put it in the Fort Garmont Road West, which is the vacant lot between the Parkland and Julia Richard's law office.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The council approves the 100th Anniversary Committee request for a parade permit on June 29th, 2019.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. The council approves the 100th Anniversary Committee request to hold Rib Fest on August 17th at Civic Park.
All in favor? Unanimous?
And the other two items will bring back to a different meeting.
Can I just say, can I say one thing?
Lynn?
Yes, I just wanted to mention one thing about the parade, because it was questioned out in the public. We requested it on Saturday, June the 29th. We, we chose that because we wanted the businesses to be open, and people would be downtown watching the parade, and then would go to the shoe store, the, whatever. The reason for this is that the, we had applied to the 100th, or the 100th Anniversary Committee had applied last January to have the OPP Golden Helmets, the Motorcycle Division, and the Pipes and Drums Corps to join us. It took a year, like we had to put in an application a year ago. We're expecting our answer in early April, and it's too late to change the request date at this stage. They're doing it through timetable. We've already posted in our events calendar that the parade would be held on the same day as the reunions planned by the Ex-KL Ladies Group, the Ex-KL Men's Group, the Tobern Day in the Park, and the unveiling of the Bronze Statue with other dignitaries. We feel that the downtown businesses would greatly benefit from the large number of attendees. Moving it to Sunday benefits no one. Many have already booked rooms and made travel arrangements based on our information available on our committee website. And that's, that's a real fear, because they said, oh, what's happening on these days? I want to book a room at the hotel or whatever. And so I'm really fearful of changing that date at all. So that, that is my, our response to, oh, why don't you have it on Sunday? It's that is Saturday. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Ashley, request to deem lots 13 and 15, Colback Avenue?
Yes, so I explained the deeming bylaw process before. I just didn't, I want to make sure that you guys understand it before we start just passing bylaws and not having reports. So was there questions about the deeming bylaw process at all? So was there questions about the deeming bylaw process at all, or we're okay? So 13 and 15 were just purchased, they're tact, are town lands, we're just merging them together so that they have no issues with construction this summer. Site Plan Control, these as well, we typically don't write reports for, but we figured this was a good news story too. We have North Point, who's constructing a rather large warehouse at their property on, at 475 Archer Drive. So Site Plan Control is a form of development, it's, you get the authority to do it with, under the Ontario Planning Act. Regulates setbacks, law coverage, parking, loading areas, storage, maintenance of parking areas with the entrances, drainage patterns. We've recently added this to the list of responsibility, or list of review, I guess you could say, with the Planning Advisory Committee. So Planning Advisory will actually go through, take a look at the site plan, make sure it's meeting the planning requirements, and they'll make comments back and forth on whether they think there's certain items that should be modified or improved. Then those, the resolution they passed there is a recommendation to council, so this one here did get recommended to council for approval tonight. I'm not sure if you guys have any questions about site plan, this is not what I'm asking the 100th Anniversary Committee to do. This is not the process.
Yeah, I sit on the committee and one of the first things I looked at on the site plan was the drainage, because I know that's a big issue now with planning, and there's no change in the drainage plans. The committee had a good discussion about it. There wasn't a, one who was negative in terms of what was proposed or where it was going to be located on the property or parking. Everything that's required by law, they have met, and I think this is just great news for Kirkland Lake, because the warehouse they're building is pretty much the same size as the current structure that's on the property. By building the warehouse, they will be able to keep all their motors and hoists and everything that they're working at in one location, right next door to where they're being worked on, which will make them more efficient and more competitive in the long term, which is good for Kirkland Lake, because that means they have an upper hand on maybe some of their competitors. So I think this is just absolutely great news for Kirkland Lake.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, but this is a $3 million expansion, or it's sizable?
I believe it was a 1.2, perhaps more with the plumbing permits, potentially.
Okay. My wife says I always double up, so...
3.6 was FedEx. So 3.6 was, I think it was 3.6 plus building permits, I think it ended up at 4.2, but this one was a 1.2 or 1.6.
Okay. It's good news.
Very good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Reading and consideration of bylaws?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The bylaw 19-029, being a bylaw to amend the Traffic and Parking bylaw by restricting parking on Duncan Avenue South, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The bylaw 19-031, being a bylaw to deem lots 45, 46, and 47, which is 13 and 15, Colback Avenue, a registered plan M120T not to be registered, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The bylaw 19-032, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a site plan control agreement with 10882771 Canada Limited at Archer Drive, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The bylaw 19-033, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a funding agreement with Fednor for expansion of municipal services under project number 851511735, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The bylaw 19-034, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with Civic Live for an economic development website design, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The bylaw 19-035, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry for forest fire management, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
I seem to have forgotten one bylaw, and that's the bylaw for the emergency evacuation, so can you just give me a minute and I'll just talk about the right one?
Counselor Rowan?
Yeah, I just wanted to explain to the people in the audience there that Counselor Dennis is not late for the meeting. He just arrived in Timmins about an hour and a half ago, but he had been on holidays. He hopped in his car and he got here as fast as he could, so I think that should be dedication, not people thinking that he's late for the meeting. Thank you.
You won't be required to say three Hail Marys?
So I have a motion that is moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The bylaw 19-037, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with the Indigenous Service Canada, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Questions from council to staff? I don't believe there was anything sent in. Notice of motions?
I've got some budget questions?
You?
No, no, we have a budget.
Okay. Notice of motions, none noted. Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens, sorry, the bylaw 19-036, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held March 19th, 2019, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous? That's the one we did. Any counselors' reports? Counselor Ivanoff?
It's more of a comment than a report. I woke up Friday morning to what I turned out to be a disaster in the laneway and on the roads, and I think the people that work in the Works Department did a phenomenal job calling out contractors, getting people to clean up around the town. I thought it was just, I mean, I don't know, who thought of calling out Roscoe's with their groomer and pulling all that slush and crap away from the center of the road and moving stuff around? I think you guys did an amazing job, and I want to thank you for the work you did. I think you did an amazing job. Thank you.
Counselor Rowan?
Yeah, and just further to that, a number of the contractors that came out, came out at their own expense, and if that isn't the community spirit, it's unbelievable. And in fact, my neighbors are giving my wife credit for getting a contractor back on Sunday night to redo Third Street, just for the record. She had nothing to do with it. As a counselor, I'm sitting there going, oh my goodness, we just hired a private contractor to come out on a Sunday night. The truth of the matter is, and I don't want to mention the contractor, because there were a number of contractors that donated their equipment and their time, the contractor had heard the Third Street was in rough shape, came out on Sunday night and cleaned up the mess on his own time with his own equipment, and I think the local contractors that did that certainly deserve credit, because I don't think that would happen in any other community. So we should be proud Kirkland Lakers when we see that happen.
Well said. Any other comments? Adjournments?
It's moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. The council adjourned its regular meeting of March 19th, 2019, to an in-camera meeting to discuss pursuant to Section 239.2 of the Municipal Act, one item concerning personal matters of identifiable individuals.
All in favor? Unanimous?